Fantastic. Okay. Welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, December 6th, and we are being recorded by Whitman Hanson Regional, Whitman Hanson Cable, sorry. And I would appreciate it if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And for those of you that have been following us, Mrs. Green, I'm going to have you do the announcements after we finish this. At our last meeting, we had the classification hearing for FY 2023, where the lovely and talented Denise Alexander and Lee Gamache joined us along with the members of the Board of Assessors. And there was some information that was still not finalized, and so we did vote at that meeting, but we also voted to continue the hearing, and that's why we're here tonight at 5:45 continuing that hearing. So I will entertain a motion to open the reopen the classification hearing for FY 2023.
Sumo.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay.
Good evening. Shall I stand?
Oh, whatever you feel comfortable doing, Denise.
My name is Denise Alexander, the Assistant Assistant Hearing Man. And I'm here tonight to just thank you very much for opening the meeting and continuing on with our FY 2023 classification hearing. We sent you all packets early this morning, just showing you the scenarios based on the updated values for the residential commercial and industrial. And as you can see, when you look through, you'll see that there really, there's no difference in the estimated tax rate that we presented on November 29th. So the reason we came here tonight this evening is to report to the LA5 excess levy capacity. It is $20,265.95 for this year 2023.
Since we already voted on all of the various classifications, is there any other motions you guys need from us tonight other than to close the hearing?
No, we don't have any other motions.
Okay. And did anybody have any questions for either Denise or Lee? Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Sumo.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. You too.
Good night, ladies.
All right. Well, since, yeah, that was very, very painless. So with that, I'm trying to look at the.
How about the announcements?
No, I'm trying to, are you guys here for something particular? I just want to make sure I make the best use of your time. Are you here about the EG EV charging station at Town Hall? Just a guess. Okay. Did you want to let us know what's going on?
Sure. Tony DeFries, Town Planner, Town Hanson. As the board is aware, there's an EV charging station out back, and I guess my predecessor had filed for a grant, which was approved and had that charging station installed. Earlier this year, and that was a couple of years ago, two, three years ago at least. So earlier this year, I received a phone call from a citizen who had stopped at the Town Hall, was running low on battery, tried to use the charging stations, but they were not working. So she was called me up to let me know that they weren't working. So I, not knowing a lot about EV charging stations, I spoke with our wonderful maintenance facilities director here, Mr. Baker, and asked him if he would knew anything about it. And he took a look and reached out to the company. And I guess what it was is there's a modem, and it was on 3G, and 3G is long gone.
Oh, boy.
So they don't, they did not function. Now, at that particular time, up until the citizen let us know, they were on basically an app. So it was a legit charging station, and obviously they weren't working. So they've been taken off the app at this particular point in time. But we've been working together to try and figure out what needs to be fixed and how much it's going to cost. So in August, we did receive an email from the company that quoted the necessary parts and labor totaling $975 to get them up and running and back on. So we're here tonight to pass that information along to the board and request, I guess, appropriating monies to get those repaired and back up and running if you choose to do so. I mean, obviously, with everything going green, and that's where we're headed, and it is at the Town Hall, I mean, it makes sense for it to be up and running for not only just residents, but in the future, if the town purchases electric vehicles, it gives us a charging station right here on site. So that's what we're here to, to just let you know about, and I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
You got it all.
Okay. And the obvious question is, do we have $975 somewhere, like Energy Committee, any type of, I don't know, I'm just.
We would, would we be able to use it in a, one of our public property maintenance accounts?
Okay. Did anybody have any other?
Yeah, I think I asked the question two or three years ago when we were debating if this was going to be installed.
Yes.
Does the town make any money from the charging station?
I would have to go back through the files to see. What I've seen at this point, I don't have any answer for that, do you know?
No, I was trying to find it too. I couldn't find anything.
Well, where does the electricity come from to charge?
Uh, yeah.
So we would be paying for said electricity to charge the citizens' cars.
Well, but there was, we were supposed to get, and Matt was way more intimately involved in this than either Jim or I were, but there was supposed to be some revenue, but clearly nothing that would help stem the tide of our budget deficit.
Especially with the rate of electricity right now, too.
Right.
It's going nothing but up.
So how?
I mean, I guess, you know, you come in, you charge, you're paying for it.
Yes.
So I'm guessing, not knowing 100%, I'm going to speculate that we get a percentage, you know?
Okay.
We must, we must get a percentage of every time that's used.
Is there any way we could check with Todd to figure out if we've gotten any money? I mean, how would we even know if we're getting paid for this? I mean, again, I'm not expecting that it's, you know, millions of dollars, but to Ian and Jim's point, like, do we know that it's even paying for the electricity that we're using to pay to get it done?
Yep.
Which at the bare minimum would be what I would hope.
You know, believe it or not, this is one of our discussions in the men's club at the Senior Center, because so many cars now being, you know, they're going electric, you know, which was one of the questions that I had mentioned last week. But, you know, I'd rather table this until we have answers. I mean, it's not that I, you know, I'm glad the citizen called, but if, I don't want to fill everybody's battery.
No, I, I think you're on to something. This doesn't, we don't even know how long it hasn't been functioning. So I don't think buying another week or two until we can get a few answers about the economics of it is going to, it's not going to kill us. Maybe we could put a little sign temporarily out of order, maybe you've already done that. Okay, there you go. I think that says it all. Universal language.
Would the board consider at least giving the town administrator the permission to, say, use that money if we get enough information? Or do you want us to come back before you?
No, I don't think you guys necessarily need to come back. I think we just need to hear from Lisa what the economics of the whole operation are. Have we made any money? How much is it costing us to charge each vehicle? How, when are we getting paid? How much are we getting paid? And then we could take a look at, if it's neutral, I don't think anybody's going to have a problem, but if we're subsidizing it, I don't.
Yeah, I don't want to be subsidized.
Yeah.
But at the same time, are we going to scrap it? Or shouldn't, I mean, even, no matter what, if we're going to keep it, it needs to be repaired.
That's, that's a good point. But, I mean.
I would think, I would think that, you know, once it's up and running, it's going to get back on the app. And now that the electric cars are becoming more popular, it may get more use.
Oh, so they have an app that they can find the pay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so this shows up. That was Matt's argument really was like, you know, this would be a good way, like, people will come and they'll charge their cars. So, and I do think there's an increased demand for people needing to charge their cars, but only if it works, so.
And if they're not paying for it.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I don't think another week is good.
Yeah, so if you, you will have, you know, Lisa look into it, see if we can get the information. Certainly, we should be able to call the company and find out how much they've paid us. I would think they would have a record of that. I'm not putting that on you, I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
And, and then, then I don't, I think we're generally in favor of getting it back up and running. We just want to make sure that it's not, you know, like, there's not some pitfall for the unwary that we're not thinking of. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
It is just sitting there, and, you know, we did get grant, apparently, you know, the town did go through the process, you know.
Do we know about when it stopped working?
3G?
Well, 3G.
Turned off 3G?
Probably a good two.
It's two, two years ago.
Probably two years ago, 3G.
So it would have to be.
It hasn't been able to communicate with the mothership now for two years.
Right. So, you know, it could have been earning money, but wasn't for the last. So you've got to kind of extrapolate. If you're looking at the future, you can't count the past two years.
No, that's a good point. We'll have to see when it was online. Well, that's, that's an excellent point, Ed, because actually, demand has ramped up during those two years when it wasn't online.
Right, which then, which then you could, you know, put it out there on Facebook and so forth, once it is up and running, that, hey, there's a charging station for any residents, you know?
How about this?
I mean, you pay for it. I mean, you do pay for it, because any charging station, you're going to go up and you're going to pay for it. It's not free.
No, so, but to Ed's point, if it's been offline for two years, then that really, we're not going to have that history to make an informed decision. Is there any way for us to figure out, on average, how much it would char, it would cost us to provide the electricity and how much we would get back from them? How can we find that out? The company must have that, right?
Yeah, we'd have to look into that and talk to them.
Because, I mean, if they were trying to sell an installation to a new town, they'd be able to tell them. That must be a question that comes up.
Yeah, I mean, this, this was a grant, I believe, through one of the, through the utility company that my predecessor had applied for.
Yeah, I definitely remember the conversation. Jim does, too. Definitely. And, you know, it was kind, we were kind of mixed, but Matt, you know, Matt was very passionate about it, so we kind of wanted to support, you know, that passion. And now, and I think in hindsight, he was right, because we could see that there's a lot, a lot more electric vehicles out there, and so, okay. So Lisa, in short, I don't think it's going to be helpful for us to go back and figure out how much money we've made, to Ed's point. But we, can we just make sure we're not subsidizing something? That's all. We just want to make sure it's neutral or a gain.
Exactly. I will.
So if these paid outweigh the cost of electricity?
Yes.
Is that the only cost is the electricity? I mean, it's a dedicated parking spot, but do other people?
Uh, no, not, no, it's dedicated. But, yeah, it's the equivalent, it's the equivalent of a handicap accessible space, really.
We could take a vote to say that if Lisa finds that what we're, we would get paid is going to cover the cost of the unit or be more than the cost of the unit.
Not a.
That we're fine with them getting the $975 to fix it. Do you guys feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Or do you want to?
Are you saying it needs to cover the $975?
No.
Or it just needs to cover itself?
It has to cover its own costs, like the.
Not maintenance.
Jimmy, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So I will entertain that motion.
Sumo.
Okay.
Second it.
All right. All in favor? All right. So then at least you guys aren't stalemated. We just get that information, and as long as it's neutral or positive, we, year ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Sorry to torture you that way.
No, don't worry.
All right. And we've got like a minute, I guess, so we could try to attack something else on this agenda. We've got a disclosure from Frank Malisi.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
What's up with that?
Well, I think, you know, he's just out of abundance of, yeah, you know, just being cautious, which we applaud.
Right.
We applaud the disclosures and cautiousness. Always better to disclose and find out you didn't need to. And in his, he's just saying, in his capacity up in Camp Kawani, that he, he's in a bunch of different organizations, and he might end up approving something that a family member is part of. For instance, his wife is PTO, you know, he's on the Hanson Historical Society and Hanson Football, and, I mean, I didn't really have any concerns with it. Did anybody have any concerns with, you know, with Frank's disclosure? Okay. So I, I will entertain a motion to accept Frank Malisi's disclosure.
I move.
Second it.
Okay. All in favor? All right. And that is fantastic timing, Mr. Weeks, because we're about to move into executive session.
Perfect.
Perfect.
But before we do that, Mrs. Green, why don't you read the public announcements?
The Board of Health has approved a pilot swap program located at the transfer station beginning January 7th, 2023. It will be open from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM and 1:30 PM to 3:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays for use by citizens with current transfer stickers, current transfer station stickers only. The attendants are now accepting donations. For more information, including a list of acceptable items, please see the Board of Health webpage. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, December 13th, 2022; Select Board, January 10th, 2023.
Fantastic. And I love the pilot swap shop program. I think it's amazing.
Where are they going to do it?
Um, I, they're doing it in the former Dog Pound Building.
Are they doing it in the pound building?
Yep, yep, that's what they said.
That's where the bodies are.
And, yes, exactly, in there. And it is a pilot, but I applaud them, because this actually is an effort to decrease the pounds that are going off that we're paying for. And honestly, people have been asking for this for years.
Well, that's, that's new.
So I think it's, I think it's fantastic. I'm going to see if maybe they'd be willing to come and talk to us at one of our meetings in January, just to give a brief overview of it. But so far, early returns are very positive on it, and I applaud them for thinking outside of the box and all that good stuff. All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, and let me just get ahold of my reasons, which is always a challenge. And we are going to go into executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline, or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, Carrie Glass. We're also going to, I'm sorry, we are not going to do that in this executive session. This, just stick with me for a minute, you guys. I kind of started thinking about this agenda and the way it's laid out, and I felt uncomfortable keeping the Whitman Hanson Community Access guy here for two hours while we're in executive session, and then coming out into open session. So if you guys agree, and I hope you do, I thought what we would do is go into executive session for the Administrative Professional Union, because those guys are here tonight. We told them we were going to meet with them early. They're taking the Indiana break at 6:30 to meet with us. So I thought 6:00 to, 6:45, we'll do that executive session, we'll come back out of that, go into open session, and when we finish, and I don't think it will take that long, when we finish open session, we can send our camera guy packing, go back into executive session, and finish up with Carrie Glass, Robbie O'Brien, and the Newcom tree fireworks. So you guys okay with that? Everybody okay?
Whatever.
All right. So, so the reason we're going into this executive session is pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Administrative Professional Union. I will entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Second it.
Okay. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay. And we are now in executive session. All right, great. Welcome back to our December 6th meeting. This is a continuation of our prior open session, and we are just returning from executive session. We'll go back into executive session later on, but more on that later. So thus far, we have, we have had a discussion about our EV charging station, and we've also discussed the disclosure statement from Frank Malisi. Next up on our agenda is to review the updated draft administration policy for public records access. Ms. Green, I will turn it over to you to discuss this.
Yes, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So as you recall, we get a, we get a lot of records requests, public records requests. Is she okay? And we did have a policy, but it was not a complete policy. So what we did earlier in the fall was drafted a IAT-Jake Research Public Records Policy, Access Policies, and drafted a draft policy. And that, what we have before us is a very draft policy that will include some guidelines that our departments can follow, department heads can follow when they receive a records request. It basically gives them some step-by-step instructions on how to process a records request, talks about the fees, talks about an appeal if a records request is denied. So basically, it gives them a whole background on the public records law, but in a very summarized way. It also outlines the exceptions for records that are not subject to the public records law. Also with this as well, our Town Council had drafted a form letter that each department can use to send out to a, a person who has requested public records. And what that does is, it uses language from the law that allows a municipality of the size of Hanson, that is under $20,000, to charge fees for the work and the time taken to satisfy input and respond to a public records request. The form letter, in, in the law, we are supposed to provide a good faith estimate of what the fees are going to be, and the form letter does allow for that. So again, this is a draft. We can tweak it as we go along, but it's a step in the right direction that provides guidance and step-by-step instructions to all our departments on how to handle public records requests.
So, Ms. Green, this will be, I just want to be clear. We will, if we implement this policy, all departments will be using this letter?
Yes.
And there will be consist, a consistent approach to charging and communicating with people about records that they request?
Yes. And as the policymakers for the town, if you adopt and implement this policy, it's across the board for all departments, and it will be distributed to all departments. I am available as, as one of the record access officers to provide guidance on any questions that they have. I mean, I've dealt with this law for many years in the exceptions, so I can provide a lot of good guidance and step-by-step instructions for any department head that needs that help.
May I suggest that you consider having a training for all of our various records access officers to discuss the implementation and get any of their questions, and perhaps even have legal counsel here to answer any questions that they might want, you know, that they might have. And, and perhaps even consider having the backup person for the records access officer, the people who might be supporting them, so that generally, everybody will have an understanding of what's required under the law, what our timeframe is to respond, what we're charging, so that we don't have any missteps, because I know that this has been unevenly applied.
Yes.
And that we've spent a lot of money and time trying to catch up in, at points where we may not have executed this the way we should have.
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green? Mr. Hill?
I'm sorry. And the same way, this is for Board of Health, but there's going to be, it's, it's going to be for, there's going to be different ones.
Right.
It's going to be different as far as how it defines.
Exactly. It will basically be available that, that, that department can modify and change. You know, the Board of Health, it will just be a blank, and they could just fill in the department that received the records request.
It keeps saying board, and I'm thinking for the police department, it's going to be totally different. Not not totally different, it's just going to be different wording referring to the department instead of a board.
Yeah, so I, I agree, Mr. Hill. So I think before you circulate it to everybody, if you could mock it up so that it's, it's generic.
It will be generic. You know, this is just, when the, when Town Council put this together, the Board of Health, they, you know, it was responding to a particular records request at the Board of Health. But we will make it generic so that will fit all departments, and they will be able to just, you know, plug in their department, in the fee amount, their, their estimated, the fee. And again, we can have any tweaks to it. This is a draft, and looking for any feedback that we can do to make it a good policy for the town.
Well, I think this is great. I know you, you and other departments have gotten quite a few public records requests, and we certainly don't want to discourage people from exercising that right. But we do want to make sure that we're uniformly applying the regulations and that we're charging, because some of these can take an enormous amount of time for us to fulfill. So I think this is great.
It's a drain on resources, and also, too, it will really help a department head that's a little bit unclear or has never really dealt with a records request. It will, it will, you know, provide that guidance, but again, I'm always here to, to help them fulfill it as well.
Any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the administrative policy, public records access policy, as presented to us by Ms. Green along with the accompanying public records request response letter.
Sumo. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fantastic. And then, discussion of relocating the flagpole from McQuon to the Water Department. Ms. Green.
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board. So the Water Superintendent, Mr. Jerry Davis, had sent me an email just asking if the flagpole that is located at the McQuon could be relocated to the Water Department, since the McQuon is going to be demolished. They thought it would be important to at least salvage the flagpole. And they were just looking for the board to approve the Water Department relocating the flagpole from McQuon over to the Water Department.
Yep, I think that's great. Did you make a motion, Mr. Hickey?
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry. I literally thought I just heard you say.
I thought you heard you hit.
So.
Oh, no, no, I didn't.
Okay.
Can, I think you were just saying. Is there a cost to the town, like, involved? Do we know how much it'll cost to move it, or I mean, I'm assuming they'll do it, or?
Well, water and highway, we work together, like, using, you know, the resources to move it. There, there, it wouldn't be a cost to the town, because they wouldn't need to hire somebody to do it.
Okay. Did anybody want to make a motion, if not a phantom motion that everybody thought they heard?
I'll make a motion to relocate the flagpole from McQuon to the Water Department. Super cool. That's what I said. So.
Okay.
That's what it was.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it's great. I'm glad that somebody's going to get some useful. Okay. And then we've got Recreation Commission. As you know, the, or you may not know, but the, the way that the process works is if there is a fee waiver or change from the fee schedule that has been approved, the Recreation Commission meets and, I'm sorry, the Camp Kawani commit, what do we call, well, they're calling themselves Recreation Commission here. Okay. So the Recreation Commission meets and they vote, and then they send it on our way, and then we decide if we agree. So the first is for a discount for polar plunge after-party at Needles Lodge. Voted to approve $100 fee. I will entertain a motion.
Sumo. Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Discount for Historic Commission Turkey Dinner on May 4th, 2023. Voted to approve a $20 per hour fee. I will entertain them. Okay?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Discount for Hanson Community Christmas to use the lodge on December 15th from 1:00 to 8:00 to sort Christmas gifts. Voted to approve at no charge.
Sorry, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? I am abstaining. Lynn?
On which one?
On the Hanson Community Christmas, because I'm part of that program, and I don't want to have a conflict. Discussion on fees for primary coal for 2023 season. Voted to approve $5 resident fee daily pass, $8. Non-resident fee daily pass, $100.
No, I think you're reading that.
Wait a minute, sorry. Punctuation matters. Wait a minute. Voted to approve $5 resident fee daily pass.
Yes.
$8 non-resident fee daily pass.
There you go.
$100 resident season pass, and $165 non-resident season pass. And the note says this is comparable to surrounding towns.
How do they do that? Because there are no surrounding towns that have such a nice little pond.
I'm not really sure, but knowing Frank, he may have checked.
He must have found it somewhere.
Yeah. Do we want to have him back to discuss this?
No, no, no. Just saying.
Okay, okay.
I'll make the motion that we just accept the rates that the Rec Commission approved.
Exactly, I agree.
Okay, all right, great. All right.
No second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, great. Discussion on day rate for bridal cottage for brides getting ready. Voted $100 day rate. The current cost is $200 for overnight. There is no day rate set. I will entertain a motion.
So I'll make the motion that we accept what the Rec Commission has done for a day rate for brides to get ready.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And then, Ms. Green, this really, I don't think requires a vote, or if it does, it's not apparent. But discussion on filming an AMCTV show in January 2023 up at Camp Kewaunee.
Well, that is, so this, this is going to be actually on December 13th for the select board to vote on, when I can provide some more information.
That's great. So we'll move past that one?
Yes.
Moving on.
We're tabling that one, are we?
Yes. Thank you, Lynn, for keeping us honest. And discussion on planting a pear tree in burning bush at Camp Kewaunee. These trees are currently at the McQuon School, which is slated to be demolished. Well, just to be clear.
Burning bush? No.
Okay, just to be clear, it is aspirational for us to demolish McQuon, but likely, but aspirational. And at any rate, nothing is going to be happening in the very near future at McQuon that would require them to have a pear tree or burning bush.
The burning bushes is actually.
Isn't that an invasive, non-native species?
It's very invasive, and they are not allowed to be sold in the state of Massachusetts anymore.
Are they allowed to be dug up and replanted?
Why would you do that?
I'm just being controversial.
Why would you do that?
Okay, I'm just being controversial.
I mean, let the thing stay there. If it gets smushed in the demolition someday, so be it.
What about, so are you saying just the pear tree?
Just the pear tree, yeah.
I like just the pear tree. I like just the pear tree and cut down the other, the burning bush, but that's more up to you guys.
I have to say.
Burning bush are really invasive.
The burning bush berries are very good chicken feed, just saying.
The good what?
Chicken feed.
I'm abstaining from the whole thing.
You know, it honestly never ceases to amaze me, the things that become controversial. You just can't predict them. Now, looking at this agenda, I would not have predicted that a burning bush would be.
Well, you don't know your bushes, do you?
Would the burning, be the burning item, the burning issue tonight. So I think what I am hearing you guys say, and we'll definitely entertain a motion, is we have no problem with the pear tree being dug up and replanted.
Right.
But we would really ask that they not put the burning bush up at Camp Kewaunee.
No burning bush, with regret. So moved, with regret.
Do we, like, I tend to don't care, but I prefer they didn't, you know what I mean?
No.
Wait a minute, did you just add another wrinkle to this?
No.
Wrinkles.
Okay, all right.
According to the Rec Commission, they didn't even vote on it. There's no, there's no recommendation by them. So I think they're just leaving it up to us.
Okay, so I'm entertaining a motion. I can't wait to hear it.
I'll make a motion that we move the pear tree.
Okay.
And in the partridge. And not the burning bush.
Not the.
Okay.
With regret.
Do I, with regret, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. And then, Ms. Green, acknowledge resignation of Town Accountant Todd Hassett as of December 31st. Did you have anything you wanted to tell us about that?
Unfortunately, our town accountant is not a town employee. He is a contracted employee. His contract was stated to expire on June 30th of '23. We had a conversation of what his forward after his contract expired, if he was looking, would look to extend the contract. He told me he would give it some thought and ultimately decided, no, he was not interested in extending the contract, and he gave his resignation to the end of December, which I gather is the 31st of December.
So what's our plan?
So our plan is to reach out to a gentleman named Eric Cashner. I believe, I'm probably destroying his last name. He is recommended by Mr. Hassett. He is also recommended by many of the South Shore managers for the towns as someone who can step in intermittently. He is a certified public accountant. So under that label, he, it's exempt from 30B for, to have him come on board as an interim. I did already research, and I have started a request for proposals for accounting services so that, just to make sure we don't have a gap in our accounting, see if we can get this gentleman on. Actually, Whitman just brought him on as well, just so we don't have a gap. And so the town, so we can actually map out a future of where we want to go with our accounting services. Do we want to maybe regionalize with another town possibly and share? Do we want to look at bringing on our own town accountant on a full-time basis, on a part-time basis? Mr. Hassett was here basically one day a week, part-time basis. Do we want to continue that? Although sometimes having an accountant here a little bit, more days allows for more availability for department heads to come in and talk with him. So we have a little bit of time to discuss the exact track.
Okay, so we'll try to get that interim person in place so that we've got somebody, and then we can discuss. Now, when I called Todd when I saw his resignation, just to, you know, see if there was anything that he needed to share or what have you, I did say to him, Todd, do you think that we ought to hire somebody full-time who would be, you know, not a contract employee, but an actual, you know, employee and be at town hall? And he did feel that that is really the direction he thought the town should go in. He expressed concern that perhaps, and it sounds like this one gentleman that you've contacted is an exception, but that a lot of the people that might be out there, you know, selling their services, if you hired a firm, you don't know if you're going to get a junior member. You don't know the quality, the depth of what they've been doing, if they're familiar with municipal, you know, and all of that. And so he felt, and also he felt that organically, it would be better to have somebody that was physically here more often so that some of those conversations about planning could happen and happen, you know, more readily if somebody's here on a more frequent basis. So that was, again, you know, I thought since he is the person who's leaving the job, it would make sense to ask him what his thoughts were. And again, we can, we can decide to act accordingly or do something different, but that was his suggestion, so.
I actually agree with that. When I was the Assistant Town Administrator at Whitman, Whitman had a dedicated accountant who was there full-time, and it was very beneficial to just sit and talk with the accountant at any time with any questions. Whereas with Mr. Hassett's schedule right now, again, he's only here one day a week. And so it makes it very difficult, especially if our office has things we're working on or other departments, you know, we have to get there today. Oh, we won't see him again until next week. I have also collected a salary survey that Lynn actually put together that we will be basically tweaking up and getting more information and just working out what the town can afford for salary. And we have, you know, an important position, a specialized position who's resigned, and we have to look into replacing that person. One thing that's going to be important is what we're paying. Based on what I've seen in the other towns and what all the other town managers and administrators have responded with the pay scale for their town accountants, we need to increase the salary quite a bit to even attract somebody who is going to have that municipal experience that's required. There's a lot under the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, with municipal accounting, with the auditors, that we need this person to have that knowledge, experience, and background, and education. And with all of those comes a dollar sign, so.
So you're going to collect that data?
I'm going to collect the data.
Bring it back to us, and then I guess we'll figure out where to go from there.
And see what we can work out a budget.
Okay. Do anybody have any questions?
What about the interim gentleman? Do we need to discuss his, what we're paying him? Or is that not yet?
I don't have a proposal yet. We, actually, Mr. Hassett and I filled out the questionnaire today, and I sent it over to him. And I'm just waiting for the proposal. So I don't, I don't know what his hourly fee is going to be yet, so.
So can we try mightily to get that in place by, not in place, but to get the response and what he's proposing and have some kind of a critical mass discussion with him before the 13th? Because we have to have somebody in place.
Yes, I definitely hope to have that in place, at least so that we can, we can have something to talk about on the 13th.
I mean, obviously, if we have to have a one-off meeting, we can. But I'm really trying to, you know, not be the taskmaster I've been. And not meet until January 10th after next week. We'll see how that works out. Okay, any further questions for Ms. Green on that?
No, no.
Okay. Approve open session minutes.
Do we want to vote on Todd's? We actually didn't take a vote.
Oh, yeah, do we have, I don't think we have to vote, because he's not an employee, and he's tendered his resignation. He's a contract employee, and he's exercised his contract, and it says that he needs to give us 30 days' notice, which he's done. So, but if you guys want to, we can.
If I had to, I would say so moved with regret.
Okay, I knew that's where you were going. So I was going to just give you that latitude.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and again, with the regret. Okay, so open session minutes, November 15th and November 29th. Look at that, Lynn, we're right on the beam. Fantastic. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve November 15th and November 29th minutes.
Okay, all in favor?
I have a question, though, about that.
Yeah.
What was this?
Yeah, Lisa, we've got a list of what appears to be very outdated records access officers. Do we need to take any action on that?
This was just a list that was attached to the policy.
Oh.
This actually is the most updated list of who the records access officers are for the town of Hanson.
Some of them are deceased.
So your name is Michael?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them are not.
I mean, Chip Muncy is deceased. Bob Arsenal is no longer.
There's a more updated list.
Yeah.
You have a really old list.
Yes.
So I have, I have an updated list, yes.
This is up to 2016.
And it's funny, this one is as well, but this one has myself. As the town administrator, we have, yeah, this one is much more updated.
In fact, this one.
But you didn't change.
I really hate to say it, but like, there's three or four people who have passed away on this list. So it's most definitely not current.
Yeah, no, this, these lists were almost right on top of each other, so they, you somehow ended up.
Can you recirculate to everybody?
Yeah, I will recirculate through the list, absolutely.
Thank you for asking that.
Sorry about that. I do have a question, but do we have to finish the town administrator's report?
No, we have to finish the, I had a motion in a second on the minutes of the 15th and the 29th, and we need to move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we were going to go to the town administrator's report, but if you had a question.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
What is going on with the cell tower?
Oh, well, that's.
It's in my town. It's in your town report? Awesome.
Great.
It's in my town administrator's report.
All right, so we will move to the town administrator's report, Ms. Green.
All right, Ms. Chair, members of the board. All right, this is a long one. Actually, that's last week's, here is my town administrator's report. Hold on. There it is. All right. Okay, so I'd like to provide an update on the cell tower. It's operational. I had reached out to the company that was working with Horizon and National Grid to get it operational. The gentleman said he was in the area, and he noticed an improvement in the cell service on his phone. So I hear it's operational, and everything's working. I would like to provide an update on 751 Main Street, which is the old gas station. So as the board may remember, quite a while ago, the board voted to move forward with foreclosing on that property. We've had our tax title attorney, she has filed with the land court for the foreclosure proceedings. Upon asking the court for status, the court unfortunately has not even begun to serve any of the interested parties.
And again, this is the property on Crooker and Main?
Crooker and Main, yeah, field gas station.
Yep.
And so we, at this point, need to wait for the court to gather and serve the interested parties of that property. So it's basically just a waiting game. But it is in the process to give an update on that. Also, with that particular property, we are going to set a meeting for January that will have, again, our tax title attorney, Laura Brown, and the environmental attorneys that we brought on board, Myers and Harrington, to come in and just talk with the board to discuss the DEP involvement and to, again, just, you know, give the board an update on the DEP conditions of the property, and then kind of get in a direction for how we want to move forward with addressing any lasting possible pollution onto the property.
Now, on that property, I've had a couple people reach out to me and say, yeah, 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 I get it that you guys are working your way through the courts to take possession. But in the interim, before you take possession, can't you guys declare that, you know, a public safety issue and tear it down? So that, because there are purportedly animals coming in and out of the house, and there's also like an abandoned RV, and it's pretty unsightly, and I can tell you, my knickers would be in a twist if I was living near it. So I can only imagine if I was looking at it every day, how I would feel. So is that something that we can look into? I know that it is possible for a town to demolish a building and then put a lien on the property, so that if it were sold, if, for instance, we weren't successful in going through the courts and doing the tax taking, if somebody were to come forward and say, no, I, you know, this is my birthright, I'm going to claim this house, we'd have a lien put, you know, on the property, and we'd be able to recoup whatever costs we paid to take the property down. But in the interim, it would clean that piece of Main Street up, and it wouldn't be a blight.
We do have to get, we have to go to the court and get a court order for it, because we don't own the property.
Okay.
Can we vote to do that, to push that?
We can have town council prepare the, for the document and see what the court will do. will do, but again, it's gonna, it's, it might, I don't know how long it may take with this type of thing, but we could definitely reach out to town council and ask them how, if they can prepare the, a document for that and then move that process forward.
I just mean, like, we're trying to clean up Main Street, right? And like Jerry put in the proposal to take down the garage. Like, these are little things, but they all add up. You've got the Steve Egan project, whether you're wildly in favor of it or not, it, it is moving forward and cleaning up some blighted properties. And so we can see that there's positive things, forward movement, cleaning up, and then we've got that, and, and if there's something we could do that's in our control, I'd like to try to see us do it.
Right. One thing I would definitely would recommend and would want to actually have Myers and Harrington here, the environmental attorneys, because on a property that's polluted under the 21E law, okay, a municipality is shielded from liability if we didn't create and we don't disturb the pollution.
Okay.
The ground pollution.
Okay.
If we go to the court and ask for the court's approval to take it down and we do that and we disturb the pollution, then we could be found liable. So I would just want perceived caution here from Myers and Harrington, the environmental attorneys, on what our liability would be if we were to move forward with that because, again, we're shielded because we didn't cause.
No, you make some compelling points, so.
If we disturb it and cause it to move.
Yep.
We could become liable.
We definitely don't want that.
Right.
So if we could get Kate to weigh in and then this environmental, these environmental attorneys to weigh in, just so that we know that we, it's no stone left unturned. We've asked the question and we were given advice that this isn't the best approach for now and we're just gonna have to stay the course, but I just want to know that that's the case.
Absolutely, we can check into it 100%.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Okay, sorry, please continue.
All right, so we announced a, a little bit ago that we had received two grants from the One Stop Growth Program. So I did receive the grant contract for the $60,000 to update our master plan, so that is back with the state and we're just now waiting for the state to sign it and give us the go-ahead on it. And then I can reach out to O'Colony Planning Council where they did help us with the master plan and get a proposal from them and we can look at some other companies as well. I also, we received a grant notification for the Cultural Council for $8,500. That's also been signed and sent over to the Cultural Council, so they will, again, they'll forward the, the money to the Cultural Council. The, circling around to McQuann demolition, unfortunately that bid did need to be canceled because when we had the site walkthrough for that, a lot of the vendors had asked about a window and roof asbestos survey.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
We did reach out to the schools more than once to try and get an answer to that and we never really got a, a no, they didn't have one, but we did get, we don't know, we don't have one on file. What we have, we gave you, which is the 2015 asbestos study, but it didn't include windows and roof. So with that said, the decision was made to cancel the bid until we can either locate one or have one done. I did reach out to Tracy Costa to see if that company did this type of work. She put me in touch with someone who does. I did get a proposal. In the meantime, our town planner found a window and roof study that was done. It was housed in the town planner's office, who would know? So anyway, I did reach out to the person who gave us a bid, a proposal, because they also said we really should have a pre-demolition asbestos survey done for the whole thing. Because if they start demolishing and tearing it down and they come across an area that's got asbestos in it but was not covered by any of these surveys, it could bring the whole project to a halt and we're looking at additional money.
Yeah, we do not want multiple bites of this apple.
Exactly, so it's best to go forward with a pre-demolition asbestos survey to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row, so we don't have any surprises. So that's where we are with that and I hope to have that updated proposal shortly and then hope to get this bid revised and re-advertised hopefully by the end of January. With a bid of this type, there's a lot of scheduling you have to do with the calendar, so I have to coordinate all of that, but it, it's in the works.
Okay.
Cell tower, we went over. So on November 17th and 18th, I attended the Mass Municipal Management Association Conference out in Amherst. It was very beneficial. They had workshops on climate change and resiliency, diversity, equity and inclusion and digital engagement. All very beneficial, very educational as far as what is going on with climate change and how the state is looking at that. We are a municipal vulnerability community, so there will be some grants coming down for us to help us identify and deal with vulnerabilities that our, our community may face with the climate change. And where we have a lot of bodies of water, a lot of focus would be on stormwater in, in that area. So that'll be coming down the pipeline. And also through this conference, digital engagement was a great workshop on this and presentation. They put me in touch with a woman named Jennifer Thompson, who used to be town administrator in Plainville, but she left that and she now is with Capital Strategic Solutions as a consultant. She is highly diverse with ARPA, knows the ins and outs of ARPA, both on the treasury side and the Plymouth County and the county side. So we had a meeting with her today via Zoom and also she brought in another, basically the CEO of the Capital Strategic Solutions, who works with community civic engagement and digital communications. So both of these ladies are gonna get us a proposal for helping us with ARPA, which is gonna be fantastic, and to increase our community engagement and communications. All of these services can be paid through with ARPA money, so no money will come out of our budget or the taxpayers. And again, Jennifer Thompson is, is, she is widely versed with ARPA and knows the ins and outs and all the reporting as far as the treasury, so this is gonna be a win-win for the town.
So once she has a little bit more, you know, developed in terms of what she's going to do for the town, is it your plan to have that presented to us as far as the, the engagement and all of that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know it's in the works.
Yep, great.
And, you know, and this came from me attending the conference. Also to the, so this is really exciting. We have a production company called Stallwart Productions who are filming a TV, two series, two programs or series up at Camp Kauanee. It's called Invitation to a Bonfire. They're gonna film two, film two episodes, which is episode five and six up at Camp Kauanee using the Frontier Cabin. Now, this TV series is based on a book written by Adrian Cheet, C-E-I-T, and it's based in the 1930s and it's about a orphan Russian schoolgirl who comes to the United States to attend an all-girls school in New Jersey. And it's a thriller psychological movie where she gets involved in a love triangle with one of the, one of the teachers and his wife. So it's a thriller. We're really excited to have these folks here because they're local. The location production manager is from Watertown, Melrose, and the assistant is from Worcester, so they're, they're used to this area. And actually, they filmed a, one of the series, it's on the AMC channel called Kevin Ken F. himself in Brockton recently, actually on the street that I grew up on. So they remembered us, so we've been meeting with them and they bring lots of, they bring revenue to the town that will go to Camp Kauanee and they're bringing all of their own equipment and it's really exciting. They, they are looking at right now maybe three days of filming to happen in early January and this will be discussed at, at the next meeting.
So you'll have a little bit more meat on the bone at the next?
They will be here.
Oh, okay.
To talk about it. But it's, it's really exciting to have these folks come here and to, to film a TV series that's gonna, that's gonna be on the American Movie Channel and AMC that is based on a book, so it's just really exciting that they're coming to Hanson.
Mr. Hickey?
Well, I was gonna let him ask, but.
I'm not saying anything.
Is there a revenue for this?
Yes, there is. So their revenue is for setup days, they pay us $2,500, for filming days, $6,000 per day, and for breakdown days, $2,500. So right now, the estimated revenue is $27,000 to have them, them here about three days. They bring everything in, when they're done, they clean everything up and bring it out. So it's a win-win and I have been really selling Hanson and, you know, our light control buildings, you need large vacant buildings. We've really been welcoming and being as helpful as we can because we want them to come back to Hanson. It's, it's great revenue, so.
It's awesome.
Also as well, the Mass Trails Grant, which the town got a little over a year ago, which is bringing, the, the town was awarded $100,000 and this is to relocate some parts of the Bay Circuit Trail. There's been a lot of work that's been done to the trail, however, because of delays and things like that, we did need to ask for an extension, which actually they granted. They gave us a one-year extension for this and they said because this particular project scored very highly in the priority list and we are showing that we are working towards it and the delays are beyond our control basically, so, supply chains and manpower and things like that, so that was a very welcome decision by the state. So that contract's already been signed and delivered to them, so we have another year to finish that project. The auditors as well, our office last two years has done a compensated absences spreadsheet, which basically takes unused vacation and any sick as of the June 30th of 2022, sorry, 2021, that we need to give our auditors as, as liability basically. So I, I finished that and got it to the auditors within their deadline, so the audit's well on its way for FY '22. And I would like to announce too, the auction for 69 Wood Street was successful. That was held on December 2nd. We ended up selling the property for $180,000, which is wonderful. The bidder, the successful bidder has already brought in the $18,000 deposit check, so the rest of it will be handled, the closing will be handled by Laura Brown, hopefully around January 10th. So that's good revenue and we'll finally get that property fixed up and back on the tax rolls. Like to just again thank Charlie Baker and all of the folks, police, fire, highway for their assistance with the Hanson Christmas Festival on Saturday. Here, it was a very good attended event. And last but not least, our office received a letter in the mail from a resident of Holmes Street, basically thanking the highway department for the improvements on the road at Home Street and County Road at the corner there. I, I guess the way that the, the condition of the road was causing some folks to have accidents over there and highway actually made repairs to the road that made it a safer travel for vehicles. So this was a very nice letter to, to receive because we, we, it's nice to get these type of letters.
Definitely.
And just want to recognize the highway department for their great work on that.
Yep, shout out to the highway.
Shout out. And that concludes my town administrator.
Okay. Then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session and we will not be reopening into open session. So this will be an adjournment from open session and then to executive session and then we'll come out of executive session and that will be it, we won't be going into open session. Hopefully that all made sense, but if it didn't, I can't repeat it.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? Okay, great, and then we're going to enter executive session. I will entertain a motion, but I need to tell you why.
Yes, tell us why.
Please. So, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual carry glass. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares Newcom tree fireworks site. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, A8, sorry, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares Robert O'Brien. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, we are now entering executive session. Thank you.